I'm going to say that time has quickly become 7:30, and I'd like to call to order the June 28, 2022 meeting of the Library Board Trustees. I'll start by giving the land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that the Downers Grove Public Library sits on the unceded, traditional, and ancestral homelands of Native peoples. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the Indigenous people who have been caretakers of the land throughout generations, past and present. We invite you to learn more about the genocide and forced displacement by non-Native settlers and the ongoing injustices against Native peoples. There is additional information on the land acknowledgement on the library website. Jen, please proceed.
Yes, Trustee Jordy.
Here.
Trustee Humphries.
Here.
Trustee Kuntia.
Here.
Trustee Nieberg.
So, not 20 years ago.
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay, so.
Technically, the oath of office is of formality, and you are our board secretary.
Right, you mean that, okay.
Here.
President Nieberg.
Here.
I'd like to welcome all of our visitors tonight to the meeting. Item number four, Bill, is your time for the oath of office.
And with Caitlin out with COVID, Dave Humphries, our board secretary, will be taking on the oath of office with Bill.
Great. Well, where's the best place for a camera? Not here?
Right in front. Right in front.
It's a formality, but it's a Bible, or it's still formal if you have one. I'm sure we're allowed. Welcome. I think you can first do that. This is kind of formal. Repeat after me, please. I state your name.
Bill Nieberg.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
To the Office of Library Trustee.
To the Office of Library Trustee.
Of the Downers Grove Public Library.
The Downers Grove Public Library.
In the Village of Downers Grove.
In the Village of Downers Grove.
In the County of DuPage, aforesaid.
In the County of DuPage, aforesaid.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the Office of Library Trustee.
The duties of the Office of Library Trustee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations as well.
Thank you.
We have the board elected to welcome you formally to the board. We're excited to welcome you. Item number four.
The board is serving.
All right, item number five is the approval of minutes from the May 23 meeting. Do we have any comments or questions from the board? I want fun facts every week.
We get fun facts all the time.
I know.
There are no comments. Is there anyone that would like to make a motion?
I will approve the minutes as soon as.
One more second. Jack, if you can state with a voice vote. All in favor?
Oh, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Any opposed.
Any stating?
No.
Okay. Since you're working. Yes, Jen is standing in for Caitlin, so this is not her usual day over here.
I was going to call her, but he's named.
I think we can use a voice vote. A voice vote is okay for that.
Yeah, the roll call votes are just for financials.
Okay.
Speaking of which, I have six financial matters. Got the May 2022 financial report, which includes yes.
And you each have the fund balance report at your place. Notice that this does not look like it normally looks. The person who usually gives, provides this to Caitlin is on vacation, so this is what they sent. It does include the incomplete June figures to reflect the taxes that were allocated to the library. As you know, property taxes are due June 1st, so we start getting those property tax payments in May every year, so they want to make sure that the bulk of our money comes June 1st and September 1st. And as you all know, we have an intergovernmental agreement with the Village of Downers Grove to cover any fund balance deficiencies for operations due to the timing of the property tax cycle.
And maybe for the benefit of Bill or maybe the audience members, when she says "they" or "on vacation," she's referring to the Village of Downers Grove Finance Department trustee. The pokey, right?
Yes.
Do they use the pokey?
Yes, they do. And you will also notice that the revenue report is missing because it was not running properly for Caitlin. It was, when she tried to run that report, it was missing all taxes and investment lines, which.
Which is.
The both. So the taxes are about 96% of our actual revenue, so it was not a useful report. Caitlin is working actively with the Village of Downers Grove Finance Department to figure out what is going on with that report, and she is hoping to have that LTO all in the next day or so. So, fingers crossed. We do have expenditure reports, so that's at least halfway there. Forty, we are 41% through this year, and as you can see, we have a few budget lines that are over that percentage significantly. You'll notice that line 5420, Insurance Other, that one always runs at nearly all spent because that is an annual premium that is paid in January. That is our property and liability taxes. It does fluctuate a little bit toward the end of the year when the workers' comp on it occurs, so we, depending on the year, we may get some money back in that line, or we may have to pay some more out. And then in 5470, Other Equipment, that's the repair and maintenance line, that is primarily the building operations department's line, and we have had some significant repairs on things recently. But Ian does have more funds in other lines. Should he need to go over in this line, he will be able to roll back a little, and we hope it builds supplies around his other lines. And then 5770 is our capital expenditures under $20,000, and that is, that is one of our capital lines that, of course, both of our capital lines go out in chunks, and that one is things like replacing PCs and other bits of furniture. We've purchased some desks. We've had some other small things, so that one is, is running at about 79% spent. And then 5870, you will notice is significantly over budget. That is where our IMLS grant expenses are coming from, and that was an unbudgeted grant that we got from the wonderful grant writing of Jen Rieske, who wrote that Digital Divide grant, and those laptops, laptop kits will be going out into the public very soon, so we're looking forward to that. So you will see that the expenditures will go over, but you will also see the revenue come in, in that federal grants revenue line when we get a revenue report.
How have the grant payouts? I know there was, for several years, there was quite a lag with Illinois, State of Illinois. I remember that statement.
Oh, yes, the Illinois Public Library per capita grant, is the one you're talking about, and yes, that will probably come at the end of the year.
With the two grants, well, the FEMA grants were paid, they were reimbursement grants. The state grant, they paid in full, and then the federal grant is paid in dispersment. So as soon as we spend it, I assume that we see in the actual amount, they give us money.
So, when we get a revenue report, you see some state grant money, some federal grant money coming in under those lines. And then I just want to draw your attention in the credit card report, there is an error in one of the descriptions for Christine Lee's, our circulation manager. It says that it's an employee recognition lunch, that is not correct. It is actually conference expenses for staff attendance at a circulation conference. That's an annual support staff conference that she sent to stay.
So, I have financials.
So, do these corrections appear, or reports get to us and so forth? Are those appearing? Can we put on those again, or will they appear in the minutes of this meeting, or can we word them motions so they will appear?
We will word them motions so that they will appear. They, we'll add them to our next board meeting's agenda so that they are approved with those financial reports.
Quick question, so I'm assuming on our fiscal year, starting April 1st?
No, we are on a calendar year.
Are we 33% over the regular year?
41%.
Around our same budget year as the board should go here.
Yeah. Yes, and the village actually switched to the calendar year, about 10 years ago, I want to say, and that is one of the reasons that they did the intergovernmental agreement with the library to cover any lag in our revenues for tax, for our property taxes, because the village libraries usually are on a May 1st fiscal year for that very reason, so that the money starts coming in in May, so you're good for your fiscal year. We start in January, so it always looks a little bad at the beginning of the year.
I'll ask the dumb question, are we 50% of the year?
No, these are the May financial reports.
Oh, so the ending.
Yes.
And one more, I apologize if you answered, sorry, the capital equipment line, 5870, is 174%?
Yes, that's the one where the grant, that's the grant expenditures coming out of that line. They were unbudgeted because we did this budget, as all of our budgets is done in August of the prior year. We had no idea we were even going to apply for a federal grant unless we able to budget for it.
So, we will.
Looks pretty good to me, so.
Have we approved or disapproved these as is?
Approved these as presented, and we will include the revenue report in the next half decade.
And that grant, the 570, will be reflected in the revenue.
In the, yes, as we get those grant monies. It was actually partially paid by state grant, partially paid by federal grant. The state grant has been received, federal grant is coming in in increments, so we'll be able to see that additional revenue.
What was the total about Jen, I can't remember?
Roughly $28,000, yeah, almost $24,000.
So, over $50,000 with the grant on this.
Make a motion to approve the, we're saying financials as, as we've been.
As presented.
As presented.
Generally, you're saying, or roll.
Yes.
Roll.
Roll call.
Roll call for this one. Oh, Trustee Jordy.
Yes.
Trustee Humphries.
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia. Yes. Trustee Nieberg. President Nieberg.
Yes.
Item number seven, public comments on agenda items.
Does that include a question?
Sure, yeah.
Trustee Nieberg. Hi. I wanted to say hello and welcome to the library community. I do have a question, though. As a card-carrying member of the library, how do you best want to serve this library? What do you appreciate most about what we do?
Well, I'll give you my take on my hopes for serving on the board. I believe very strongly in the mission of the library. I hope to help satisfy that mission, help the library fulfill that mission without fear or favor.
What do you mean by that? Fear or favor?
I believe that my early readings about the library bill of rights and the, who's the other one?
The freedom to read.
Freedom to read.
Mm-hmm.
I found those compelling, and I believe in that mission, and I think they have to be executed without fear or favor. Is that unclear?
No, thank you.
I believe very strongly in the role that I play in terms of being a fiduciary for the taxpayers of Downers Grove. And then as a resident of Downers Grove, I hope to enhance the library and help it evolve and be prepared for the future.
Is there something that you appreciate specifically in terms of programming or serving a particular aspect of this library community that you find joyful or interesting, or you're curious about? I mean, obviously, you chose to volunteer, so I'm curious what you love most about this library?
Well, as the father of a seven-year-old and an almost five-year-old, I appreciate very much the children's program. Frequent patron of the library.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for your questions.
Any other comments? Jen, there is. And item number eight, public comments on other library business. So, we will move on to item number nine, new business. Item A, 2023 preliminary budget draft, favorite early year.
Ah, yes, so we're, we've brought our newest trustee in and getting thrown into the deep end of the pool here. Our usual cycle puts new trustees generally starting in September so that they get a little chance to understand how our library works before we're thrown into the budget season, but Bill is with us here and is learning.
Standing careful.
Yes. Hopefully, I will have a lot of good input for us, and then our usual process is we have this preliminary budget that I present in June. This is just kind of budget framework. It gives us an idea of where we think we're going to be as far as our personnel lines and non-personnel lines, and the approximate percentage, the basically ballpark of where we think we're going to wind up with our tax levy for this year. And then from there, our July budget will be a little bit tighter, and we will have some more detail from our management team on what they are expecting for the upcoming year. Those have, they've started getting that information to me. We are seeing some significant increases in things like supplies and software renewals and maintenance contracts that we will need to reflect in this budget. This was pretty much a straight line across the board, 5%. So everyone is looking to economize where they can and make sure that they are budgeting for anything that we can anticipate. And then, as usual, we continue to tighten those numbers up for our final budget in August that comes before you all, and that is when you actually vote on the budget, and that tax levy and that budget is then forwarded on to the village. As you may or may not know, our budget and all of these many pages that I give to you gets boiled down to four pages in the village's hundreds of pages budget document. So, we do, that is where it winds up. You will continue to see it in this format as we go through the process and continue to tighten those up. We have had some fairly significant turnover recently at the library. We are finding that we are losing a lot of part-time staff to full-time positions, and we are doing what we can to consolidate positions to actually create some additional full-time positions. That is also something that was included in our equity strategic plan, was to increase the number of full-time positions available in the, in the, what had traditionally been part-time jobs for us in those lower pay grades, and to actually create a path for forward progress in a career here at the library by having full-time positions in different levels here at the library. So, we are, we have recently been able to do some of that. We've had several long-term employees decide to retire. Just this week, we had another long-term employee, part-time person turn in for notice, and with another opening in that department, we are looking at creating one full-time job and one smaller part-time job rather than the two more significant hour part-time jobs. So, we're making those changes, and every time we make those changes, it kind of changes what's going on here. So, I am, I'm really interested to see what happens with our insurance employee benefit renewals this year in meeting with the folks from A.J. Gallagher, who are the brokers for the Lira Insurance Pool. I was speaking to some of their folks who are on the employee benefits side. Now, this is outside of our village's group insurance plan, but just stating that Blue Cross Blue Shield has been giving a lot of their customers a significant increase this year, which is why I included a 25% increase for our insurance lines this year, hoping that we will be able to tighten that up. As you know, with our budget due in August, we do not actually get our final renewal numbers or employee benefits until October, so this budget has to be done well before we know for sure what we're getting. The village group generally meets with their broker in the beginning of August, so they are usually able to give us a closer estimate for our budget. So when we get that final budget in August, when I present that to you, that will be the latest thing we have gotten from the village's employee benefits insurance broker. And that was all I had. Does anyone have any questions?
Well, just a leading comment. We're using the number of 5%. I would be made to be able to say to that, but we're seeing inflation at 8%. What happened to that during the rest of the year? I hope it's going to go down enough to have a fine, but sort of the, we're using belt type in here, and then our, the results of our dedicated personnel plan study that we did some years ago has updated projected 5% in personnel. A little nervous about that one, but if, in fact, that is a substantially lower than reasonable number, we will use some of our staff. We strive, certainly, whatever, to remain competitive in the staffing world. Probably, I'd say that we'll try to be a little better than that, but last few years it hasn't been quite as possible, but, you know, loyal staff, trying to provide the working conditions to handle for some of that, but maybe 5% or whatever, we'll see how these numbers should go, but just caution.
And we are going to do, we are due for a salary structure to be re-benched marked with full competitive market analysis for our, not for this budget cycle, but for the next one. So that, consulting fees for that is already baked into this budget.
The budget benchmark study also looked at comparative staffing, so if you have the over 500, that's the.
And the Illinois library standards also have staffing benchmarks within the standards, so you can take a look at where we are with those. We are, we are at a growing level, which is their intermediate.
And then what's the, the 25% renewal rate increase in all of the?
Yes. I did it in all the insurance items because it is done as a package, and frankly, the other insurances are not as significant. It's that, that health insurance line is the one that really moves the needle for us.
I remember the packet last year at some point, maybe it'll happen in July, a lot of, there's the budget, still the budget.
Yes.
The percentage of our budget that's allocated for staff salaries is like, very good, 5%. So that's.
Yes.
Yeah, I remember.
Yes. The, so this will be, this will be the first budget that we are using the new, serving our public standards for Illinois Public Libraries, which changes the standard benchmarks. It had been based on percentages that were static percentages. The current version now has us looking at what the averages are statewide, and so what the standards and the pie chart you're used to looking at says that salaries should be 50 to 60% of your budget, and then with benefits included, it should be 60 to 70%. The new standard does that statewide average, and the statewide average is actually less, it's about 60%-ish. So, you'll be seeing those pie charts will return to us in July.
Does that vary by library size?
Yes, it varies wildly by library size, which is why I'm.
So, is it benchmarked by large libraries or this?
No, it's a statewide, it's a statewide average. I'm, I'm not sure. Yeah.
Quite equal, right? Downstate, small library, Downers Grove, or, I mean, they're, they're home.
Yes, very much.
Well, I don't know whether it's possible under the way the state class made of, during our library to, no thanks, but Polo, Illinois, for example, is part of, well, comparison is, is, or part of.
At least, at least it will be static numbers, right? But HR source.
Yes, that was, and one of the things that we do is we can actually pull, HR source does a salary survey that includes that other kind of data that allows us to be able to benchmark ourselves against libraries in our population size, libraries in our budget. against libraries in our population size, libraries in our, our budget size, and libraries in our physical size. So that it, it allows you to, you know, slice and dice the information a little more concisely. And one of the things that we have done in the past is to use those comparison numbers and look at libraries whose service area has an EAB, the Equalized Assessive Valuation of Property in its district, that are similar to ours, population that is similar to ours, and location similar to ours. It's, one of the ways that I like to do it is to look at, at who are the five above us and the five below us on those different measures and then be able to see, okay, who's, who is in that list on more than one of those measures, those are our best comparable libraries, the ones most similar.
That, that was very, very helpful.
Yes.
How have the benchmarking provided staffing per circulation or staffing per capita or anything that you've normalized?
The, are we talking about the salary survey that I was referring to or the state? Okay. So the, the standards for Illinois Public Library just changed the way that they do that benchmark and they now do it as a statewide average. And so it's rolling data. The data is generally a year or two back. So what we currently have is fiscal year 2020 data to work from to compare ourselves. And that is, that is what the standards for Illinois Public Library said. It used, the previous edition had us using static percentages for personnel, personnel salaries only, salaries with benefits, and then for materials collections. It had been 50 to 60% of your overall budget should go to salaries. With benefits included, it should be 60 to 70%. And then your materials should be 12% or more of your operating budget.
Obviously, doesn't that sound great?
Yeah.
So that average is applying to libraries of all sizes from little towns to. But now they just do it as a half per library?
But now, now it's this, this aggregate. All of our libraries have to do what's called the Illinois Public Library Annual Report. And that is how we report our statistics to the state library. And the state library in turn reports that to the public library data service, which feeds into the Institute for Museum and Library Services, which is our federal, oh, our federal agency. So that's their main data gathering tool. The state library uses that, we call it the IBLR, Illinois Public Library Annual Report, uses the IBLR data to create this report. And it'll be in your next, it'll be in the next budget packet, I promise. That, that's basically just a pie chart of the average, this is what the average for all libraries in the state of Illinois. And that is an overall average, everybody from the Polo Public Library, which is this big, to the Skokie Public Library, which is that.
But it's still a percent of budget.
Still a percent of budget.
Is there no benchmark that says this is how many staff FTEs you should have on a per, I don't know what technical term to use, per circulation, per population, or anything like that?
There is, it's based on population and that is within the new standards for Illinois Public Libraries. We also just got our, our census 2020 data. So we actually jumped a population category. We had been 49,200 odd folk and we are now over 50,000. So that bumps us up into the next category. So we are not, we had gotten to the, they don't just call them normal things. The standards are minimum, growing, established, and advanced. And we used to be between established and advanced and now we're down to growing.
If, if.
I did that a couple, yeah, I did that a couple of months ago in, like, when we first got the, the new population data, I'll dig it back out for you. When we first got the new population data, I did just a quick update for the board trustees and included it in the board packet.
Okay. All right. Just hold the rest of the questions to that report.
Yes.
It'd be interesting to see if I got an FTE or some kind of normalized measure. Can I put your, your idea of five above, five below, what are we fit?
Yeah. How are we doing it against what are truly our peer life?
Yeah, I think that the HR source information is more insightful than rolling those together.
Just a few more questions out of the library budget.
The, we did use an equalized assessed valuation increase that is based on a report that Village Manager Dave Fieldman gave to the Village Council last year in June, anticipating that 5.6, I believe it was, increase to the equalized assessed valuation property in the, in our service area for the next several years. So that is what the Village is anticipating and using in their budget calculations and we are following that as well to, to get a better sense of what the act, what the taxpayer impact will be rather than the pure dollar amount here over here. And as you can see, I did include some historical data about our property taxes and where the, where our taxes, what's going on, sorry. And where we are, our operating tax rate, our actual levy, the equalized assessed valuation of property in our service area, and then the library tax per $100,000 of home value to give you a sense of where we are this year, where we've been in the past, and where we think we're going to wind up in those initial estimates.
So looking at page, what, 43?
Yes, 44. Yes. Yes, page 44 includes the 2023 estimates, but you can go back and see.
Is it page 41?
Yeah. That in previous years, our, our actual library tax per $100,000 of home value has decreased over the years since in 2016, the tax per $100,000 was at about $80. And we're anticipating that initial estimate for 2023 puts us still under $70. And that is at a time when inflation is, inflation is rampant. So you can see that we have done significant belt tightening over the years.
Can you remind me for a second here, which of these numbers or these percentages, I guess, are under our control and which are not?
The only thing under your control is the, is the levy. Well, and the wage, that would increase. But yes, so the tax rate is actually determined by the levy being spread over the equalized assessed valuation of all property in our service area. So the larger the EAB pie gets, the lower the tax rate. Yes. So every time that the EAB goes up more than the levy, then our tax rate falls again. And our tax rate is for 2022 was less than 2021, was less than, was less than. We actually have not had a tax rate increase since 2015. The levy has gone up steadily, but so has the property and the value of property in the district. And it is also important to remember that this past year, we did also have the tax increment finance districts, the downtown TIP expired, and so that valuation came back on for the tax laws. And if, as anyone who is familiar with our financial management plan, when we did that back in 2017, the finance consultant actually recommended that the, the board increase its tax levy by 11.75% in a single year and then move on to doing 2% to 3% annual increases each year. After that, this board chose instead to try to smooth those levy increases by keeping it closer to 3% to 4% each year.
11%?
Yeah, the 11% did not sit well with anyone. So we, we did take that strategy and we've been using, utilizing a little bit of fund balance every year to make sure that we are putting money away for our capital reserve fund. And then we have also talked about the idea of needing to increase that capital reserve fund transfer each year.
So can you go over for all of these for the year? For July, we're looking at generally, what do we do in the meeting?
So we review the July draft budget will include all of the managers' recommendations for their budgets, their asks for additional anything. It will also include the best information we have up to that point on renewals, software, other purchases, supplies. I just received the access services budget yesterday from our brand-new access services manager, Lucas McKeever. He reported that their primary vendor for supplies is anticipating an 11% increase for the next year. So he's, will be seeing what those actually look like as we move forward. And as I said, our salaries lines are a moving target because we keep having people resign and new people hired and a whole slew of retirements and stuff.
My personal house is up this year, 80%. There's not that one really, that's my, that's what I did. On page 26 and 27, just wanted to make sure I'm interpreting right. The first.
Okay. Yes.
The first page of expenditures, that's a 7.7% increase. And on the second, the next page on 27, there's a 5% increase number and then a 6.9. Is that just the way this report is paged out?
Yes.
Or is that a logical split between the 7.7 increase and 5? I noticed everything on the second page is 5.
Yes, and that was, what we did is for this kind of framework budget, we, we looked at a 5% increase for all non-personnel lines and then worked on the personnel lines with a 5%, a salary increase of 5%, an internal equity project that we're working on because we've discovered that we've gotten out of whack with, we did a new salary structure and a new vote of doing the hiring and how we were applying raises. And we discovered that when we did it, we did not get, provide enough differentiation for those at the, that have been here the longest. And so we really plus the minimum wage increase. So particularly in shelters and clerks, our lower pay grades, what we found is that people who had been here for 10 years and the people who had just been hired, that our, we were really compressing those salaries and that we had not given enough differentiation for those. So we're looking at our internal pay equity so that we, we have a nice, smooth, I've been doing some lovely scatter plots to see where everybody is and, and looking to smooth that our, so that we're not here, here, here.
I know the board's already improved the salary structure. I'll follow up and maybe get a check around information on that.
Yes, we worked with HR source that is a nonprofit HR, yes. So, and they helped us with the salary structure and benchmarking. And it was their recommendation for the upcoming year that our benchmark, that we beat 5%.
And that was just for the last eight years?
Yes.
But it's a great potential to kind of give you a breakdown of like, just probably the salary structures, salary levels and kind of grade outs, knowing how much impact you would be minimum wage change to in the household.
Yes.
If the health insurance does come out to be 25% increase availability, let that stand or will they push on or will they shop that?
I believe that they will, will shop that.
So we have that as a potential risk.
Yeah. We've, we've had them, we've had maybe prior years where the initial thought was a double-digit increase, where we wound up getting 1%. So they always give us that, yeah, they always give us that worst-case scenario first.
So that's a big factor in the total increase. The total increase still sits at, am I interpreting this right, 6.9%?
Yes.
That's over the, the budget, I mean, actualized, right?
Yes.
Close to 8, it's on the actualized 22 numbers. Still significant at Lawrence's explanations of the taxpayers.
Yes.
Well, we review this in the future. I'm sure there's a lot of today's point of belt tightening already going on, cutting ideas out there. It'd be helpful to get that in writing so that everyone understands the part of libraries that are, that are costing a lot.
Absolutely. And we do, we do our best to shout around for best deals on everything as one of the things that we strive for when we have to do any sort of large purchasing is to get, you know, free proposals. You know, we, we want to make sure that we're getting the best price for everything we do. And when it comes to our largest projects, those are generally competitive.
Yeah, it seems like most of the economists are listening to, when you simplify what they say, whether they come from Kellogg's or Caterpillar or Federal Telon or whatever they say, plan, open, open, and then the rest. It's an unusual time. Hopefully we'll follow up soon. Yeah, I think, yeah, Laura's feeling, you know, the community is struggling. And we need to acknowledge that, make sure we're doing everything we can. The, the per 100,000 stuff falls in category, that's why it's statistic sometimes, because people still feel the difference.
Well, and that's why on page 40, that is, sorry, page 41, that is. Sorry, page 41, that is, that shows applied to our median home value. So that is your average homeowner in Downers Grove. This is what they would actually pay.
The son that assumes, that's a freeze in the home value from 2020?
Yes.
Right?
Yeah, that is, that is the latest median home value for the village of Downers Grove that is available to us from Census dot bill and American Act line.
That's all from the perspective.
I think it's also where you have to think about, you know, speaking to the needs of the community. So many things libraries do, and you're directly able to help them find jobs, keep jobs, stay, you know, stay safe and happy and all those things.
Those are the things that should be highlighted.
Library and libraries increase in the level of use at the library increases in time of recession because people are looking at ways to economize at home. And the library is a fantastic way to do that. We are inexpensive entertainment, education, research, resources. So that is very important to remember that we get busier at times like this.
It's always a delicate balance. Pay taxes in Downers Grove, I don't want to pay anymore, but neither, you know, our library team members also pay taxes. It's unclear.
And many of them live in Downers Grove.
They have to pay rent by tenant.
You may not know the answer to this, I know just the background of the police pension order for the last seven years. Sometimes the levy that we pass to the village, they absorb that decrease and keep the end levy whole by pulling the funds from the general fund. Is that similar with the library or is ours passed through directly?
Our tax levy is a pass-through directly at the village level. So whatever you all vote on as our tax levy is what gets inserted into the village's budget.
But they, they can still choose to offset that through the general fund or not?
Uh, they generally do not.
And it's itemized over...
Yes, and they, it is, we are on the tax bill as a separate line. Our IMRF rate actually is going down by almost 3, by about 3%. So we had been at 8.89 and we're going to be at 5.8. That is, that is good news. So that's the...
Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund.
That's the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund and that is our employer portion. The employee portion is static by statute and our employer portion is calculated by the IMRF according to their statutory formula.
So that's what they give them to the leaders, is that our two?
No.
I know. In 42,000 to 31, or I guess, yep, anyone?
Have they been accounted, terminated to a actuarial change or an internal change?
They have, in this past year, IMRF has done very well with their investments and have reached 98% funded. So I'm assuming that that is a significant portion and that we probably should not expect that to happen next. We'll probably see it go back.
All right. Any other questions on the preliminary budget? We visited.
Yep.
We'll leave the whole presentation to that as well.
Sure, sure.
We always put it on screen.
I always have it right.
What names do we have before I should be approved?
I do.
Do.
It's four then the second.
Yes, the second we're going to do.
Then the fourth.
So next, next month is when we really start. July is usually the nitty-gritty month.
And different scenarios and...
Yeah, we sometimes move in July with a couple of options.
Yes.
For sale in August.
Yes.
But even July.
Yeah, if you go back to some prior years, very often I will present in August the budget at a 3% levy increase or a 4% levy increase or, or a couple of different options that are, you guys can be side by side.
And to item with 9B, transfers library capital replacement fund from library fund.
Yes, and this is an annual transfer. We generally do this in June following the Certified Annual Financial Report, which gives us all of our final, final numbers for the previous year. That was actually presented to the village of, on June 7th. And this is where we had talked about the idea of transferring some additional money from the library fund into the capital replacement fund to provide for the workroom renovation project that we are currently continuing to plan and praying we might get, have bids come back within the estimates. But doing the additional transfer to fund that, that projects over. Our normal, our regularly budgeted transfer from the library fund to the library capital replacement fund is $350,000. Our goal is to be able to do all of the things that were on the capital needs assessment that we did in 2017, that outlines all of our projects through 2027, and wind up with a fund balance in the capital replacement fund over a million dollars or future capital needs. So this provides for all of those targets. You can see, I did actually grab the, what was in the Certified Annual Financial Report. So those all seem grabbed. That's, by the way, that is our entire, that is page 46. Page 40, it's a little... Page 46 to 50, those are the actual, that's the actual Certified Annual Financial Report section about the library. And the biggest thing to, to pay attention to is the net change in our fund balances and where we're, where our ending balances are. And then on page 51, we just have the annual, our annual projects remaining from the capital needs assessment. Actually, it does all of them from 2018 through 2027. What is estimated are costs and then just a simplified balance making the transfers. Now you will see that for the transfer in, starting in 2023, I have included an escalation of 5% per year to that balance transfer. So that our ending fund balance in the library capital replacement fund continues to grow so that we can continue to provide for our long-term capital needs.
Pardon me if my memory is faulty, but I think that the plan in 2017 assumed a annual inflation rate, if you want to call it that, for capital replacement, 4% a year. It's going to be a little higher than that this time. So moving ahead, planning it, that may come along with the plans for, for the team. It may be a little easier on... Also, we have to... We've got some very careful planning over the last few years of having a reserve fund. So despite running a checklist, it's a special assessment of a couple of years to put on new roof to save it along the way.
David, break to about page 53, the 4% escalation multiplier on the 53. Just commenting that that may be adjusted to get further out.
Is the life path of projects from 2017, a lot of time you get there at 10-year-old? Is that in the out years, is it still valid or is that going to be changed? I look at, look at on page 51, 26 and 27, pretty minor.
Yes, yeah, yes. And so it was definitely the capital replacement, the capital needs assessment definitely was front-end loaded on what our capital needs were. And it comes down to where the last of the big things is, is the carpet replacements that we are looking at spreading over two years in 2024 and 2025. One of the things that really works well for libraries is planning large projects over the winter months because for us, they are large projects. For our, our trade contractors, they are generally small projects and easy to fit in over the holidays. That's part of what we're doing with the workroom renovation project. We're looking at bidding that project out in a timely fashion to be able to do its, do the project starting in November and ending by February. The same kind of timeline would apply for the carpet project and would be done in phases as moving book stacks to replace carpet is a big...
It's just a time when we're not quite as busy and we don't impact the customers as much.
We tend to have fewer programs during that time of year.
So where, what page, are you showing the fund movement between the general fund and the library fund and the capital replacement fund?
52. So our 2021 ending balance is there at the top. The suggested transfer in for this year would be $500,000 and then going back to our, what was our $350,000 with a 5% escalation starting in 2020.
Where is, is there something that shows the library fund being impacted by that?
I think the best place to see that is probably back in the, in the budget. Is page 24. Where you can see the 2022 estimated budget, or the 2022 budget and then the 2022 estimated. And then you can see the projected beginning balance for 2023.
So just to understand what's at stake, so I'm saying, no, this is something I do. If we, if we try to belt tighten this year, we could run closer to, closer to the wire and not make the transfer and use the funds of the library fund as a soft increase. Is that a correct assumption?
And that is generally what we do. We are always looking at our fund balance. And generally what we do is we look at our fund balance from the previous year to offset this year. And we have been very fortunate to be able to come in well under budget in most fiscal years. So that our balance has continued to grow in the library fund.
Part of the inflation dynamic is construction costs. We were talking about that earlier. Has there been any discussion about delaying these in the hope that, I don't know how transitory the inflation is, but some component of it will be likely? Is there been any discussion about that?
To delay the, the workroom renovation project with hopes that, that the inflation would come back down. Some... Our staff is working in inadequate work because it's just not what it comes, comes down.
And with the idea of staff needing, potentially needing the one... Especially because this is like a, it's a big deal for that. You've got to see those, those spaces are really, really working on the issues.
We had a tour.
Bill took the tour this afternoon.
Again, it's a balance, it's a state competitive working conditions. It's part of that equation along with sound.
I just seem hardwired, I'm not advocating one way or another. It's just the background, it's a good question.
It's a good question. I think that, I think that we all sort of thought, okay, maybe it's something we can move or shift until we were, until we did that tour and we had, and greatly hear from staff.
And that just like passions before, but I forgot. That's all 23 types.
And actually, it is split over 2022 and 2023. So it's a late budget, but the impact of that gets much bigger. Because we do anticipate that that project would be done from November to February. So the project cost would expand budget by 3%. And just because we put the project out to bid does not in any way compel the board to award those bids. You can choose to decline all this.
How far over the original budget was it? Is it 300 over the original budget? So that, so that is...
Yeah, and there's a knife to the heart.
So that is the, the sum total justification for the additional capital fund makeup.
All those old buildings with random holes in the middle and trying to rebook things. And I know that, that we tried, there are a lot of different options that can work. Maybe move this, oh, we can't, so we move it this way and working in the existing space.
And some really great value engineering by our construction management firm, Shels. Not, you know, just things like, we are not moving this sink. So we are doing, because, you know, being a concrete floor building, moving a sink in a workroom is a bigger deal. So, you know, trying to do those sorts of things, it's reusing pretty much every stick of furniture. Reusing all the lighting fixtures, all of those. We even talked, we even talked about reusing cabinetry, but you saw that. But definitely switch.
It is, it's intense. So well...
Well, well.
But we even went through with the architects on the furniture specifically, down to how many chairs do we actually need to replace or add? And most of the chairs can stay, you know, that, that sort of thing. Everybody's desk, reusing all of the upper cabinets, all of the, our workstation cabinets. There are some that are, we even have, have one that was being used elsewhere in the building that's of the same type that is no longer being used. So we've got it in our storage room, ready to be reused in this project. Yeah, actually, we're reusing all the doors.
Could we look at what kind of scope deprease would be necessary to, to keep it within the original budget? Is there an option for that?
There really wasn't, unfortunately. To achieve all of our project priorities. The main thing is tearing down the walls.
Getting back to the library capital request fund. I'm looking at five hundred thousand. Almost, I'll transfer five hundred thousand to the library fund.
I will say. If the fund file and that goes to order, I'll make a motion to table. Is it, doesn't make sense to table that until we have the full detail, the full workshop around the budget? Because this does remove an option right from the table. So we can follow the forms from the board, if I remember correctly. I'll make a motion to table this for, until the next meeting, pending the full budget discussion.
We usually make the transfer in, in June, but we can make it anytime as possible here. It really doesn't. The table is letting me continue the, to specify.
Yeah, we, we will continue in the planning process. It's also, you can also turn it on its head and consider, if you transfer the money now, theoretically, you can transfer less in twenty twenty-three to achieve that same version.
I mean, you have that, the motion to table.
You, you state the logic.
Sure, until we get into the next round of budget discussions, passing this today would take one option to manage the budget off the table. And so just in the interest of keeping all those options on the table, knowing that we don't have to, don't have to do it right now. That seems like prudent in terms of keeping all options.
I think that's true. Not my favorite.
Second?
Second.
Second to table?
Oh, you're moving to the table, yeah, that kind of takes questions.
So you're second. Are you seconding Bill's motion?
Oh, I think the way it works is there will be seconded that motion, it'd be a vote of all of our voice voting. And then if that passes, we table it. If it doesn't pass.
Then it converts to.
May I have your attention, please? The library will be closing in fifteen minutes. Please bring the items you wish to check out to the self-checks or the first floor service desk at this time. Again, the library will be closing in fifteen minutes. Thank you.
Except me, I'll turn the road in with all my stuff.
Wait, no, no, that's not how it is. I am the second. I am the second his motion. That's all right.
Put on the one, pass the second.
No, no. For any seconds. We'll refer back to the original motion to move five hundred thousand to the capital request fund. Seconded, seconded already. And we will proceed to roll on.
Okay, trusty board, yes. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Trusty member, yes. Trusty member?
Consistency made.
Yes.
Jen, just a quick note, the items on, the items for nine are labeled eight for A and Z. On page sixteen, point five, six, seven, eight, so we're going to ninety-eight. I apologize for the mistake. It is the adding of the O of office. Normally, our active items are eights.
It's right on the minutes.
Item nine, C, strategic planning request for proposals. And this, so this is our, our RFP for strategic planning. The idea is to put this out this month and be able to get, start gathering those proposals from, from consultants. We will send it, as I said, to the consultants on the Rails consulting directory, to anyone who does strategic planning. We will also post it on our website and put it out through the library's social media and our e-newsletter, letting people know that we are accepting strategic planning proposals. So if there's anything, read it over, is there anything that you want to see, comment?
Yeah, I have a question about section five, the, so, I'm just going to work. I appreciate that kind of outline of the inputs, potential steps, and strategies. I wondered about five specifically, because that seems to be the bulk of the delivery of it. And I'd like to see that broken down a little bit more into specifics. Because with the service queries, those events, that's, that's a plan. Like, the whole plan in this one, one thing here, and I'd like to see that maybe broken down a little bit more so that we get a better sense of, of what we're going to have at hand and the process. You know, certainly consultants will comment all different ideas about what the specific proposals will be and what format they take. If you tell layout, I would think, if you have a sense of that, you know, being able to steer that would be really helpful.
Is there anything specific that you can add?
Well, I mean, it's, so it kind of says the beginning, it's potentially a three-part plan. So what is, it does that look like year by year breakdown of timeline, staffing involved? And we have several library departments that are coming, certainly have different objectives within the departments. Does it, is that what they're delivering to us or they deliver at a really high level? To not worry about the staff to report those strategic elements. I think that's, that's the only result that I want to see, is to be able to understand how much, how much am I going to be getting to? How much, how many conversations do I need to have with staff members of different groups internally to understand what they need, what they need to move this thing forward? And what kind of is, you know, like, what's the handshake moment? Where does it go? Okay, like, I have a strategic plan, but my question is that one. Okay, well, is the expectation that, yeah, library takes it from here and where is here? Is it, I mean, I don't think it is like a month, I'm counting all the things required we're going to do. But I also don't think it's do some stuff over the next three to five years, because there's so great in between. And I, I would assume so, yeah, so a little bit more specific.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that at all. I'm not sure how, how we're doing. Whatever you want, the purpose of mine, I'm wondering, is there a way that. Can we flush that out? I'm sure we would. You're not going to make it less?
Yeah.
More, if you add it. And I would be proud of including that process in motion. Should it still come?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, I'd be curious to have to hear what other people had to say about the, about our RFP, because there's lots of comments there. I mean, having just been through that, I couldn't even, strategic planners, I mean, this is, I, I don't think I saw it, I can't remember. It is a kind of, you know.
See, it seems very similar. I, I think that, I do hear what you're saying. I think that it's good to have. There's, there's a lot in that E.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it could be, you know, detail maybe in that, what it will be. And I really do hear you, that what is that point that we stop? When we say, okay, we, we have what we need and we are right, we are capable to move forward without. I think that's important to know. What, what are our little goals or what are our little checkpoints that we've reached for ourselves? And we feel confident, whatever it is, which we.
What I'm thinking about, you know, because, because I was here for the first strategic plan, and I know I can't think. Points every year we go, okay, here's how we're measuring up against our strategic plan. I'm also thinking about what we want to, what we want to hear every year in course about our progress, like, what are our mistakes? And just being able to have, want to have a little bit more, being able to for us to know, like, oh, right, we're going to be hearing about these things in the course for the next three to five years. But we want to make sure.
Kind of like revisit, or revisit strategic plan. We did it completely, so we. We did that one completely without, I normally came on the board, right? Would that have been, I think so. We did that, I was brand new to this position, and it was the first thing that I took on. And we outlined a whole process, and it was actually, like, the stakeholder interviews and things were my get-to-know-you moments with people in the community and in, in our other organizations. And so it. Yeah, so it, it was definitely a homegrown plan. We also included a large staff committee that helped with that, who were amazing. And it was a wonderful team building activity as well. But that is definitely not the approach we're able to take this time around.
A little history on that. Strategic planning in the far past was pretty much. Buying and selling. And before truly, before we began searching for a way to record that time, decided we wanted to do it differently and emphasize the team work, strategic planning, including the community, including all the stakeholders and that. And that was kind of part of the job search for the director. And in my opinion, it came in very, very, very well. Great strides, it was the past, but now we're, we're, other stuff.
I think it's maybe still.
Fired.
I think it's something we're asking the question, and I just started with the public forum. Is there a reason why we're not doing an interim this time? I, I know.
And may I have your attention, please? The library will be closing in five minutes.
It's very difficult to. To really get that. And that for people when you're the one who's been doing it the whole time. And a third party tends to get better data from those stakeholder interviews, from surveys, focus groups, those sorts of things, when it is not done by somebody who has the vested interest in what we think's our now. It's the same as we said for staff.
So are we putting ourselves at any kind of disadvantage by doing that part?
Now you.
Done.
He said, now you want to wait.
Motion to table the RFP, mark for one month.
Actually, you can do that by your voice voting.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposing? Any exceptions?
I have ten unfinished business. Number eleven, library director's report.
You have library director's report, and other than that, we have Lizzie Matkowski, our adult and teen services manager, here to talk to us about what's going on in adult and teen services.
Hey, everybody. Do you understand that?
Whatever the asshole there is.
He was also in the gentleman's room, so it was a little bit more of a laid-back.
From my chair, okay, sure. Okay, hi, everybody.
Hello.
I'm Lizzie Matkowski, I'm doing the adult and teen services manager, almost five years now. Amazing. So I have the long report I won't be giving up to in ATS. I think you all have been up to the carpet, yes, and even people who care, it's a maiden upstairs, right? So. So we also have summer reading going on right now. We do adult program, and we run the teen program, and we run the staff program as well. So right now, at one or two o'clock this afternoon, we had two hundred and ninety-three adults who have registered for the program so far, fifty-four teens and forty-three staff members. We also have a separate program called Book Club for Graduation that our teen operating coordinator, Amanda, started. I think, I'm going to say it last fall, so it's pretty new. And she's been trying to push that in conjunction with some meeting and at schools a little bit. So we have fifteen teens that are involved in that right now, and that's kind of like the kindergarten program that they have in the kids' room for the.
Thousand books.
Four children, but it's a hundred books for graduation for the teens, and they get gold prizes for one day each certain goals and then when they finish. Other programs are going on, it's not just summer reading, but a lot of it is summer reading. Very busy upstairs, I don't, I hope you all see the decorations. Our staff are laying on, not me, I have not been for after. But our staff have really done a great job, I think, decorating upstairs this year. For programs in general, we're still doing a combination of in-person and virtual. We found that there are some programs that are doing really well in the virtual venue and some that people prefer in person. So for example, our next chapter book club group has continued virtually because we have participants who are not just in downtown, but from the area, and it's much easier for us, for them to meet in person, or virtually rather than in person. They're trying to maybe want in-person meetings every once in a while, but virtual is working really well for them. Some of our business programming has worked really well virtually, so we're not messing with that too much right now. Our in-person attempts haven't gone as well, so that's the sort of thing that's staying, staying virtual. In-person, we have been trying to get some teen craft.
The library is now closed. We will reopen tomorrow at nine AM. How do you make?
The teen craft programs have continued to be super popular, more so the take-home than doing them in the library, although we're still trying to do it in the library due to staff time and just the amount of effort it takes to keep those going. Every week or so weeks, Amanda and I, mostly Amanda, is working on a new system to create some in-library kits so that we have them ready, kind of like, ready to go, but you would like, you can stay in the library and do them, but they're not changing every week or every few weeks. There's going to be four or so, and they're going to be ready to go at any time, and then they'll pop one or two out every month or two. So that's going to be valuable, hopefully, in the fall. Some of our programs this month that have done really well are Outwards Journey, Storytelling, Official Park. our Outwards Journey Storytelling Official Park, kicked off. Pride Month had 77 people attend, which I thought was pretty great. Um, and the Pride Panel, um, the recording is up right now, but it had 26 attendees, so if you haven't seen it, I don't recommend it. Um, let's see. Our four-program series with Heather Hathaway Miranda kicked off with Don't Be a Better Ally, which had 10 attendees, some really good feedback. And then we have a few more coming up with her in that series. And that's where the difference between 101. What else do we have coming up? More teen home projects, um, a few outside presenters for the teens, like a paint and sift programming is coming up. An intro to plant care program is coming up as well. They're going to be kicking off again, you from behind the lens. I don't know if any of you familiar with that program that we have for teens. It's, we've done a series of them. This is bringing back the very first one, which is, um, a several-week program where they really learn, dive into a different craft. This one is photography, right?
Yes.
Ed is going to be participating. So this one is going to be a photography-focused, um, program. And applications for participants are going to go out, I think, in August. Hopefully. Then D and D Adventures League is going to start soon with one of our staff from CIR media. We did D and D better, so we're going to be, we're leading different programs on that. Um, there's a series of programs called The Matter of Balance coming up for seniors that have really high interest as far as I've seen on the desk. Um, as well as some outdoor programming coming up. We had to unfortunately move the self-defense program indoors, but hopefully the tie-dye program, which also has had really heavy interest for the adults, uh, is coming up this week. And then we have an outdoor, um, like yard games coming up. So there's Giant J-NUB and then Giant's Connect Four. And that's the only ones that Amanda's helping out. So those are some of our programs that have happened and some coming up. Are very exciting. Um, we have a lot of newer collections that have launched recently or that are launching soon. So based to a SWAN deal that they offered, um, we're going to be adding Comics Plus to our online, um, it's not E-Books, it's e-comics, but it's going to be added to our e-library very soon. Um, this January, was it January that you were just telling us about?
January.
We're on the spot. The Innovation Team, uh, this January, I think this January, launched our Memory Care Kits as part of our Memory Emporium. Uh, there are six themed kits which are upstairs. Check them out. They've, some of them have been more popular than others. One of them, I think, is a little popular. Um, it's a, about 26 so far. They have different themes like Golden Ocean of Hollywood, National Parks, the 1950s. And it has kind of, um, a different, a few different things that people can use that are manipulative and visual and auditory and very, um, picture-oriented and tactile. And activities are going to like prosper or things like that in all of it. Um, what else do we have? War Games have been added pretty recently. I don't know if you've seen those, but they've been pretty popular. Uh, we do have our World Languages Collection. And we're hopefully going to add, currently we have Chinese, Polish, and Spanish language materials. We're hopefully going to be adding a Korean option based on a few requests that we've had. Um, bin boxes for DDEs, um, they have moved upstairs. They've been around for a while, but they're upstairs now. And soon, hopefully very soon, we'll be launching streaming services to be on our Grofus for people to check out. So, uh, we will be having things like a Netflix account and an A-plus account such and so forth. Acorn, which will be a hot commodity with all people who like to watch the British shows. Will be on our Grofus and really check those out for a period of time from China or bin-watch that show that you haven't had a chance to watch and then return it. Uh, what else? All of the selectors, I think I also talked about her collection audits last time in the kids' room. We are also undergoing a collection audit process in Adult and Teen Services. We started, actually about two years ago, with a pilot audit of teen fiction and half of adult fiction. So those wrapped up. Um, I had Amanda and Ben helping out with that. We also audited some of our book discussion selections from the last few years. So we wrapped those up. The reason we're doing the audits, which I don't, I don't know if you have someone over a lot of this with you, but just in case, you know, it's, we're taking inventory of our collections and looking at how diverse the collection is, how it represents a wide range of experiences and viewpoints. Um, we're hoping to get a baseline for all of our collections to see how diverse the collections truly are. We're, the hopes are we can use this information to create a collection that can provide both, um, a mirror to reflect people's experiences in the communities and also, we know to see what other people's experiences are. And we want to make sure, as we've been working at as a library, that we are making sure everybody in the community feels really welcome and represented. And that we look wide from a variety of experiences and lives represented in our collections. It also allows us to put the data in and find gaps, increase awareness of what we have in our collection. A lot of the selectors who have now started, said it's getting them a little bit more idea of what they have in the collection. We're not going through and auditing every single item, but we are, um, taking some lessons that we learned from the pilots. So, for example, when we finished the pilots, we decided that we were not going to, it would be impossible for us to audit every single item. So we banned this, discovered a great, um, way to calculate a statistically significant sample of every collection that we're auditing so that we can take the number, randomize the collection, and then get a great, um, representation without looking at every single book in the library, which would take us years and years and years. This still might take us years, but not quite as long. Um, we also determined things like we needed a universal vocabulary because as we were doing it for pilots, we were realizing that some librarians, um, were using slightly different definitions for what it meant to be from, um, South America or Latin America. So to naturally get a shared vocabulary of what it meant was defined and understood and so that people could just look at it and, and know that everybody's kind of applying the same sort of definitions. Maybe talk about organization, sorry. Um, we also decided that we're going to take the lessons we learned of how the methodology that we used and create a training pathway for other staff. So again, Ben, Amanda, and I worked together to find some great resources for staff to work on their own. We all have gone through quite a bit of professional development in order to learn how to do this effectively. And then we also took that and developed our own methodologies. Um, so we developed not just things for people to read and watch, but we also trained and worked with staff in the department together. Um, and then we also developed, um, some ways to find additional resources because the problem is often that, um, these topics are not, or books on these topics don't show up in all of the journals that we use to review. It might be harder to find. Uh, so we started some ways to find additional sources of words that reflect those identities or, um, associations of publishers or writers that reflect those identities or some things we've been looking at. And then we made to expand it to, um, other parts of the, of our work, such as programming and displays and book lists and things like that. Um, so currently, uh, the teen fiction is complete and half of, um, adult fiction has been completed with their audit. And they're taking their, um, what they've done so far, trained the other staff. They're all starting their own audits. I'm starting my audit. Um, so we're taking, so we're in one phase and then Amanda and Ben are going to move to the next phase. And what we do with this now, so they're auditing their orders now in slightly different ways so that we can compare. Um, one of them is ordering everything that they're, auditing every order that they make. And one of them is auditing all of the books that are actually added to the collection each month. And that's, I know we all, I'm going to try not to talk too much, I'm sorry.
I asked me a compliment to give you. We, I have someone called Roadhouse Publishing. And someone, one of the authors, she's like, "I just wish it was like an adult summer reading program. I want a sticker." Until I got them able to tell our. She's like, "We can have an adult reading program, you can get, you know, awards and prizes." And everyone was feeling very excited. So all of the people were on our website from all over the country because they thought that was the coolest thing that we have an adult reading program with prizes.
It used to be a lot more rare, but it's a lot of fun, right? And you gave a sticker for one of the prizes. You went and sold, no one will doubt you.
I'll pile on. My, my mother has rapid onset dementia. And I think resources like the Memory Care Kit are fantastic. She lives in Florida, so she can be a mentor.
My father was as well.
But I think that's nice of us.
That was really the work of the Innovation Team. And it was not just, it didn't mean us at all. So that was a group effort for sure. That took a lot of time, we got off the ground. And we put a lot of research and thought into what we put out there and what was in there ourselves.
What are the programs that originate here that pop up in other libraries that could make here a new one? What's your point of view on that?
Just a few more things, because I don't want you to do all the wrong.
Sorry. It's my fault. I thought you were going to say.
I'm all set. Um, I do supervise social work effort, so I just wanted to let you do a little update on that. Um, I believe one of our previous interns is here for the summer. And she, she's the mainframe, but she has been keeping up with, um, we finished up the, uh, some of these resource finder that we have that's online that all the service desks, and it's also on top of the cupboard for people to look at, that had this very comprehensive list of local resources and organizations and a variety of topics and needs that are reflected in. She and all of our interns have worked on it, and she really wrapped it up pretty well as part of her rest project. Um, so she's here during the summer. She's also overseeing all of our cupboard replenishing. And we are once a month having, continuing to have a donation drive thanks to her coming in and doing that. Um, our donations are slightly down over the summer, but we've heard from other organizations that that's pretty normal. Uh, but the need is definitely still there. We see people going over there. We see the thing being taken all the time. Um, she, they have continued to see people come in for help and referrals. Um, weekly, she gets a lot of people who, um, come back for, for repeat assistance. Um, we've had 18 assessment forums filled out from 2020 to 2022, which, considering that we closed for a while in there and, um, we didn't always have interns, I think is pretty impressive. And 13 of those that we have been able to count were repeat visitors who came back for more assistance. So that was great. And, um, to kind of echo what Julie said about hiring news, I this year have hired three full-time librarians. A woman promoted one for a part-time librarian from one of our assistants. And I just recently, well, soon, um, one of our corrective assistants will be moving to full-time. It's been amazing. So if you see new positions, say hi. Um, a few of the new positions were promotions from part-time staff to help that staff from one position to another. But there are new positions in the department. And I'm going to wrap it up there. I'm sorry, I'm talking to your ear off. If you ever, anyone who has any questions, feel free to email or talk to me, stuff. I keep you locked in my office sometimes, but, no, I'm just kidding. That's pretty often, so always happy to talk.
I have a question. I just want to thank you for that. In some respects, in that quiet, it's G U S and fun, the children's program presentations. But it's, it's, it's like what? It's important stuff.
You don't have a tight line, right? We'll try and have mine.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. And as well, trusty comments for questions for information.
I'll leave the clock, I'll try to be clear. Uh, I just want to thank the library for the support of Roadre Grofus, which has been a great event. I think the library's back garden. We both serve the community. And the Roadre Grofus was extremely successful. Large crowds, uh, enjoying themselves and listening to great music. All kinds of good times. And it's important to remember that part of their, part of Grofus' function in life is to have fun and to see people with smiles on their faces. Another very important part, however, is to raise money. Roadre, but Roadre Grofus has no hate staff. We operate with almost 800 volunteers. And all the proceeds from the festival go back into the community in the form of grants to non-profit organizations and college scholarships. Very similar to those things. Because of the success of the festival, we'll be able to help that handle this this year, I think. The, in the 12 years prior to this one, that the Roadre Grofus existed, we've returned over half a million dollars to the community in the form of grants and scholarships. So we'll be able to continue that. Thanks to the library for helping us.
Um, I just wanted to, um, say thank you and to recognize Joanne Hansen, uh, our president of Friends of the Life, Dowdrow Grove, the library, um, who stepped in now. She's been, been a part of the library and the Friends organization.
Um, I just wanted to comment on, I know this is several, three years ago now. I don't obviously judge it back on, but, um, the email that she sent on June 3rd to me about instance of staff safety. I wanted to say that, yeah, I was a member of the library. Distressed that staff are concerned about their safety. I mean, nobody should feel that way at their workplace, certainly at our company. Um, and I just wanted to ask how the mother's doing and see if there's anything that we can do to be supportive of staffs, you know, while we feel in the safe path.
We continue to work very closely with the Dowdrow Grove Police Department. It does, we do seem to be at more of a, things seem to be leveling out a little more. Um, we do have, again, a significant number of folks who are banned from the premises. And we never take that lightly. Um, we, our security, uh, building operations monitors are here all the hours that we are open to the public. And, uh, I think that the staff really appreciate having them and, uh, knowing that they are here. And I, we, we are hopeful that, that things are leveling off and improving. The, the changes in the past year with, um, the Community Kitchen opening, the Pats Shelter model changing completely. Um, the changes made, uh, in the parking deck situation where there had been a homeless encampment and now it's not. Um, it all kind of came to a head all at once. And we're, we're moving forward for that.
It's important to understand the, uh, the community, that part of the community that we're serving. Most of them are great, very appreciative, very collaborative with the library and Community Kitchen and other organizations. On the one hand, we're, we're less than that. And I think all the organizations are looking for ways to, like, heal that small number. And it's really helpful.
But to be clear, not everyone who has passed, let me, it's happened to some, hasn't been that big of a deal. At least, I want to, I want to make sure that we're not trying to label a certain, carry a certain, sorry. That's okay. I just wanted to make that clear, that we're not, we're not saying that.
Thank you very much.
And, and not all of the, the folks that are using the Community Kitchens are food insecure, not hopeless. Um, we do also have a, a, with the Tivoli Hotel in
We do also have a, with the Tivoli Hotel in town as a single resident occupancy hotel. We do have quite a few actual residents. There are quite a few people that the casual observer might say, might think it's homeless or not, who are actually residents of our community and really do appreciate being able to be here at the library. And so we are continuing to work with those individuals and to, and with the others, just trying to connect them with our social work intern, with the village's social worker, with the Pats Street Outreach Team, with Hope's Front Door. So we are not only working through the issues with our safety and security, we are also trying to find help for the individuals who need it most.
I have one FYI that you all may not be aware of. I even prepared for this, I went back and I tried to watch some old videos of the community, the transmission of media. It's nearly impossible to hear what's happening in the videos. And so I think in the interest of practicing communication, I'll look for ways to hear facility in this room, maybe it's a different forum, maybe it's a different place, maybe it's in other chambers. It's very difficult to hear.
I agree with you. I tried to watch something, I was trying to go back and watch some, especially we were in the room, the other room, last month. I was trying to watch it because I was trying to remember what I said, and I was, couldn't hear anything. I could only, I could only hear Julie. It was just like you would talk, and then there would be nothing, and then you would talk again. It was, except lots of me doing this.
See what happens when it goes on vacation.
It's not always easy to hear the council in their chambers either.
I don't know if we can get that, those sandbags or something.
Well, the council, I don't know if you've watched them recently, they, they need the lights, and they've gotten that all wired up. It's pretty, you use them, it's much better, but you watch them.
So people look ahead to make some recommendations for us.
We get to warm up later. Talking into my laptop, so he doesn't know about you there.
That's technology.
One of the advantages, especially considering doing it at the hall, is the parking situation can be simple.
Yeah. We're not usually a suit heads, right? A suit though.
Yeah, but. Well, thanks for being on the panel, it's, it's very important.